Good afternoon to everyone. I know I said earlier, but I hope everybody's keeping cool in this, on this very, very hot day in September. Thanks for joining us today. A couple of quick, a couple of quick housekeeping things before we kick our meeting off. So on our call today, we have the, uh, this is the Board of Elections meeting. Well, one thing is the meeting is being recorded for public posting. So everyone is aware. I've also posted that in the chat. Also, on our call today is we have our four Board of Elections members. We have some town staff, Monty in our front office and Ray. We have a few interested members of the public who reached out to me. There's a public meeting, so they reached out to get the link. So they've been provided that. Our, our election, election applicants were provided the link, those who applied for the, for the office, for the, for the candidacy. So we have all, all those, um, those parties currently on, on the call today. So I will, uh, I'm going to kick things off with a roll call for our board of elections. Before I do that, Ms. Board Member Lundie, did you want to go now or you want me to, to, to do the roll call first?
You can do the roll call, then I can go. Yes.
Okay, sure, sure. So no particular order, we'll go, uh, Lundie, please say, yeah, here.
Up here.
Okay. Saunders.
Here.
Uh, Sojourner?
Here.
And Williams. Uh, Chair Williams, are you on, are you on mute perhaps?
No, I'm on mute.
Oh, now I hear you. Thank you.
Okay, sure. I'll increase my volume.
Thank you, Chair Williams. So at this point, our meeting is called to order and, uh, Chair Williams, I can turn the meeting over to you if with, with the agenda, if you'd like, and I'll, I'll be your liaison and help facilitate. I know, uh, Board Member Lundie has her hand raised, so, um, we can take that question?
Yes, um, good, what time is it? Good afternoon, everyone. Hi, I am Carlotta Lundie, Board Member Lundie with the Town Board of Elections. Welcome to all of our guests and to our, um, potential applicants running for the Ward Ones and Two Seats. Chair Williams, I would like to, um, make a motion and request that we move the, um, let me pull up my agenda. Mr. Chonovich. That we move the item to, um, certify the, um, applicants, um, later in the agenda until we have the discussion about the election sign rules. So I want to make a motion because, um, prior to us having the, the discussion for the election sign rules follows the, um, certification and looking at the candidate applications and everything. And so I would like to make a motion that we would move that to after we have a discussion or, you know, after we have a discussion about the election sign rules. I don't know how you want to handle that and maybe move that up in the agenda? And then immediately following. Go ahead.
I think I'm going to leave it as it stands because right now I think it's in the right place. Is there another reason why you want it moved for, forward?
Yes, because, um, I had a question about the, um, the document that we received, um, with respect to the election sign rules. I didn't see that it answered the question that, um, I had asked. And so I wanted to have a discussion about that because I'm not comfortable certifying anyone, um, until I have my question answered. I'm trying to understand that document that we received.
We can do that.
I can ask my question now if you would like about the election sign document we received.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to jump all over the entire agenda. Go ahead with your question and maybe we can get this resolved now.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. So, um, Mr. Chonovich, I did receive the document that you sent to board members with respect to the election sign rules. And so my question is, um, I didn't see in that document how that document answered the question about, um, prior to a can, prior to an applicant being certified by a town supervisory board of elections, um, under what authority can an applicant, um, start to post signs, campaign and all of that? And if you could help me understand where that is in the document, that would be helpful and then I can go on and, um, vote on our potential applicants becoming candidates. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Chair Williams, may I answer?
Uh, yes, uh, let me just say something before you answer. I don't know if, uh, she saw my, my response to her about that very same question. Um, I don't know if you saw it as well. In fact, I'm not, no one else responded. So I assumed that I answered her question. I don't know if she understands what I'm talking about. With Ms. Lundie?
Hello, yes, I'm here. I'm listening.
Okay. Did, did you get the email response from me? Addressing that question that you had?
I saw a response, but that was prior to Mr. Chonovich sending, um, his document. So I just wanted to find out from, from Mr. Chonovich or yourself, but probably from Mr. Chonovich, under what authority does, um, that, under what authority can a candidate who's, I'm sorry, can an applicant who has not been certified by a board of elections and in particular the town, city, what have you, um, start to campaign and post campaign literature? So I'm just trying to find out, can you show me in that document that was submitted, where is that authority allowing that prior to someone being, um, certified? Because, you know, I just want to ensure that everything is fair and equitable. So I have no problems if it's clear in that document. If I need Mr. Chonovich or you or someone to show me, where is that in the document? Thank you.
So at the, uh, Board Member Lundie, if I may, so at the very bottom of that document, um, that where it's quoted, I believe it's Prince George's County Election Law, uh, the 45 days, did you see that? Did you see that section?
Yes.
So nothing, nothing that I'm aware of delineates the difference between becoming a candidate versus becoming a, a certified candidate. So it's my understanding that that particular law is 45 days before the election starts. That is my, that's my understanding of it. And that, and the, the document that I have provided, um, it's not, it's not a new document. I guess that I was, that, that document's been utilized by the town for election signs for, I guess, multiple elections now.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. And my follow-up question would be, thank you for that clarification. Since this is my first time being a part of this particular board.
No, I understand.
Question. So I would like to make a recommendation that in the future, we would make this a part, this document a part of the campaign package and clearly, um, have our, our applicants to understand what all, everyone to understand what the rules are because I haven't seen, um, too much campaigning going on with potential applicants. So thank you so much for that clarification and I am, I'm satisfied. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Board Member Lundie.
Okay, Mr. Chonovich. I think we should make that a part of our package for the future. And any package that needs to go out after this meeting, maybe you can provide a, an, an explanation or a paragraph explaining when they can start campaigning, posters, flyers, et cetera. So people will get to know who they are before the election day comes. Does that, do, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I do, I do, and I agree, Chair Williams.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lundie.
Thank you, Chair Williams.
So Chair Williams, um, I, I, I place number two on the agenda. Uh, after the call to order, just as a refresher for everybody, if everyone on the call, we've, we've been over all these deadlines, um, at our, at our first meeting. Um, I did want to point one thing out that I learned in between meetings, just for everybody's information on the call, that, um, Prince George's County Board of Elections informed me that, so due to the fact that our, that our election deadline fell on a Saturday. Uh, in fact, it not only did it fall on a Saturday, it fell on, um, our register, registration. It fell on a Labor Day weekend, which was Saturday, Sunday and Monday. Uh, the Prince George's County Board of Elections, uh, informed me that the, the, the registration deadline falls then on the first business day after, uh, first business day after the week, that for the, in this case, the long weekend, but I did want to reference that, that everybody, everybody was aware that Prince George's County Elections, uh, told me that. And that's regarding a registration to vote. So at this point, our registration to vote is now, is now closed. Our books are closed. I wanted to mention that. So um, if there, if there are no questions on that piece of information, we can move on to number, uh, three. That's all I had. Chair Williams on number two at this point.
Okay. Uh, at this point, we can, I think everything else under number two is clear. Does anyone have any questions or anything they want to add before we move on to number three? Okay, then let's move on to number three. Can everyone hear me?
Uh, yes, Chair Williams. I can.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I can hear you. Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay. All right, now let's move to number three, which is review and certification of candidates who have applied. Um, I think everyone has received an email from Mr. Chonovich about, uh, Ms. Shepherd, who, who has decided to withdraw her application, uh, in Ward One as a, a council member? Has everyone received that information?
Yes, Chair Williams. I mean, this is Board Member Carlotta Lundie. Yes, I received it.
Okay. Board Member Sojourner received it also. All right. Uh, is Ms. Dixon on the line? Oh, no, she's one of the candidates. I'm sorry.
This is Saunders. I received it.
Okay, great, great. Thank you so much. All right, um, let's start with Mr. Bridgman and go down the list, uh, from there. Has everyone re, reviewed the candidates' applications at this point? Yes, this is Board Member Sojourner. Okay, um, in, in your review, I think what I would like to know, excuse me, what I would like to know if there are any missing lines that have not, missing information on their applications. Those are the areas that need to be addressed because doesn't matter how many lines are missing. I hope you made notes of those because we need to contact the candidate as soon as possible to get those areas filled in. We cannot fill in missing information for the candidates. They will have to come to the office or if possible, come to the office, fill in that information, and date it again so that we have everything in order. So there won't be any, you know, discrepancies or misunderstandings. So let's start with Mr. Bridgman first. Uh, who would like to go first?
Uh, Chair, uh, Chair Williams, I just didn't want to, I wanted to say one thing for the boards, just for the board's knowledge. I'm sure everybody, saw it, but I, I wanted to point out too, for everybody's sake on the call, that I, make sure everybody saw the summary document that I provided around a two pager for, uh, for each candidate. Um, you know, that, that was prior to Ms. Shepherd, uh, withdrawing her application, but, just making sure everybody saw that summary document that includes, included kind of an overall picture of each candidate's, um, each candidate's submission. Did everybody on the board receive that?
Yes, I received that. And yes, yes, sir, I did receive that, um, Clerk Chonovich.
Uh, thank you, Board Member Lundie.
Yes. This is Board Member Sojourner. Yes, received.
Board Member Saunders also received it.
Thank you, everyone.
Point of, um, point of all of this order information, um, Chair Williams, this is Board Member Lundie. We also received the document also with respect to registration or voter registration also on one of the candidates. I believe it was, um, I'm sorry, one of the applicants, um, Mr. Bridgman. So I did receive that as well from, um, Clerk Chonovich. Thank you.
Yes, I think we all received that information. That's, that was an update, I believe.
Yes, ma'am. So therefore I don't have any, I don't have any comments, further comments. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So there are no comments or additional comments from Mr. Bridgman. Let's move on to Mr., uh, Diakate. I'm not sure how to pronounce his name, but I hope that's correct.
Board Member Lundie, no comments.
Uh, Board Member Sojourner, it looks like his information was completely filled out, the required information requested.
Okay, um, thank you so much for that. Let me just tear him in for just a second here. And I judge, I put a note down that on his financial disclosure, it was missing a date. He signed it, but he didn't put a date. And also on his schedule A, page four, item six, the name of his bank, I don't recognize the bank. It's not a name. It was more like an acronym or that's what it seemed like. Um, I don't know if anybody else is familiar with that acronym. So I don't know if it's you. Hello? Hold on now, look and I'll look Chair Williams to see what it is. One moment.
Uh, Board Member Sojourner, I, I was able to pull it up too while we're talking. It looks like it's called, it's worded, it's, uh, Serv Bank, S-E-R-V. Maybe somebody can verify that they're seeing what I'm seeing? Is that what you?
Yes, that's what I saw.
Yes, Mr. Chonovich, I agree.
Is anyone familiar with that particular bank? Is that a US bank or is it a foreign bank?
I, I just looked it up. I just looked it up, Board Member Sojourner. I'm not, I'm not familiar with it off the top of my head, but I Googled it and it, uh, it does come up as a, as a, as a bank.
Yeah, it comes up as a Phoenix, Arizona, but it's one word, Serv Bank.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Yes, uh, yeah, I, I concur with, um, Board Member Saunders. Uh, on your, on your first question, uh, I'm not sure if it answers your second question about the bank, but your, your first question, I can confirm as the town clerk, Board Member Sojourner, that, um, I'm looking at the app. I, I also see that the, the financial disclosure form itself was not dated, but I can tell you that it was submitted, uh, completely along with his application, the same date. So from a, as a formality standpoint, I could ha, I could, uh, I could have the applicant, you know, date that, um, document, but I can say that it was all submitted together, um, on, 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 on time. Does that at least possibly answer your question for now?
That, um, Mr. Chonovich, that was, um, Chair Williams who requested the, who asked the question.
Oh, my apologies.
That's okay. That's all right.
Would you repeat that again, Mr. Chonovich? I was a little confused there.
The, the sec, the second part?
Yes. The second part where you say he, he submitted it. It was, he, it was, the, the document was signed. And everything was on time, but I missed another part of what you were saying there.
Oh, sorry. No, what I was saying was, um, we have the, I think the question was that it wasn't dated, but signed and not dated. And what I was saying was, what I was saying was that the application itself that was signed and dated, I guess by Mr. Diakate, was then submitted along with the financial disclosure form at the same time.
Okay. All right.
So we, I could, we could go back and contact him and have him date the form. Uh, he, he would probably just date it the same day, I guess, as the submission. Let me pull up his form again. He applied on, uh, we received it in the office on August 10th. So his application.
Yes. Okay, I see that. Okay, let's have him, let's have him to sign it, uh, to date it. And that would place him, all his paperwork in order.
That makes sense to me. Thank you, Chair Williams.
You're welcome. Does anyone else have any comments about, uh, this particular applicant? Questions or anything you want to add?
Board Member Lundie, no, ma'am.
No, Board Member Sojourner, no. Okay.
No, I don't have any.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's move on to the next applicant, Ms. Dixon. Any, anything anyone want to add or comment?
A Board Member Lundie, not at this time. No, no, ma'am.
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, well, it looks like everything is in order. Thank you, Ms. Sojourner. Okay, then that takes care of the review of the applicants. Today is Wednesday.
Uh, Chair, Chair, Chair Williams, uh, sorry, I was reading, uh, I was reading a comment in the chat. Um, so I, I missed the last one, but did we, did you already moved, uh, move, um, also review, uh, applicant, uh, Blunt's application too? We're, we're good there? Just making sure.
Yeah, we, we just finished, we were just asking, I was just asking rather, uh, to move on to Ms. Dixon's application. I don't think anyone has any comments and if there are no comments or questions, then we can move on to Ms. Blunt.
Oh, thank you, Chair Williams.
Board Member Lundie, no, um, comments for, um, applicant Blunt.
Right. Comment from Board Member Sojourner.
I have no comment. Board Member.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Saunders, thank you so much. Before we do a vote on certifying the ca, the four, five candidates that we have, no, Ms. Shepherd is not, no longer a candidate. Uh, I believe it's four candidates in total. Uh, before we do that, I think we need to, to, or have we already addressed, um, everything that we need to address so that we can vote to certify those that we have in terms of Mr. Diakate. Do you want to wait until his application has been completed? Otherwise, we can certify everyone and then vote to certify him once he has dated his application, the missing part of his application. I think personally, I think we can go ahead and certify all other candidates, get, get Mr. Diakate's, uh, missing date. And then we can certify him and move forward. We don't want to hold up everything. And since it's just one small item, it shouldn't take him that long to add that, uh, missing date on the application. And then everybody will be certified at that point.
This is Board Member, I agree.
I have a question, Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Lundie, so just for clarification, so are, are you, are you recommending that we certify all of the applicants? Or just the applicants except for the gentleman who's missing the date?
We will certify Mr. Bridgman, Ms. Dixon and Ms. Blunt. We can do that today and then we will certify on the next audio call. We will cert, vote to certify Mr. Diakate. I don't want, I don't want to hold, I don't want to hold up everything at this point or everyone's application at this point. I don't know how long it will take Mr. Diakate to come to the town office to put his date on his application. That's why I'm suggesting doing it this way. Does anyone have any comments?
This is Board Member Sojourner. I just think it needs to be made clear to Mr. Diakate that, and if I'm understanding everything correctly, he will not be able to start his campaign or post any posters or do any, any campaigning at all until he is certified. So, and that won't happen until his application is dated or the missing date is, is provided. Am I not correct?
Correct.
Uh, if we can get him to come to Town Hall before close of business tomorrow, then, um, and get his paper signed, then we can go ahead and certify him. But if we have to wait until next week, that would hold up everyone else. That's why I'm suggesting certify the other candidate, the other three candidates today.
No, I understand that, Chair Williams. I just wanted to make sure that it was made clear to him that and until he signed, until he provided the missing information, he is unable to do anything.
Right. And I think, um, uh, I think Mr. Charnovich will make that clear when he sends him an email. He can put a statement in the email and, uh, when he emails him about his missing date on the application.
Uh, Chair, Chair Williams?
Yes.
If I may, Chair Williams, um, uh, Monsi in our front office is going to, while we're on this meeting, Monsi in our front office is going to give Mr. Diacate a call right now and see.
Okay, great.
And see what he can do to move this forward. Um, I guess, you know, procedurally, um, I'm not sure when we're meeting again or whatnot. I just hate, would hate to hold it up, especially with the candidate filing, uh, this, the, the, what's it called? The, uh, the, um, what is it? The candidate statement and the bio and the picture and everything. He's already submitted that to us as well. So.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to work with any of our, any of our applicants to get, get, make sure they're certified. So we're going to see what, what his availability is to, to come, to come date this. Is that, is that okay, Chair Williams?
That is perfect. If he can come today or tomorrow morning to, to, uh, do that, that would be perfect.
Thank you, Chair Williams. We'll keep you posted if, uh, Mon- uh, Ms. Kamono in our, uh, front office gets ahold of, gets ahold of him as we, as we move along with this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Ms. Lundie has her hand up.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Chair, um, Charnovich. So, um, Chair Williams, I believe, um, and I'm sorry, speaking to, uh, my colleague, Ms. Sojourner, I believe Mr. Charnovich has stated that based on his interpretation of that policy that he, um, forwarded to us, that it did not preclude an applicant for candidate to start, um, doing their campaigning now, even if they haven't been certified. So I believe that was the understanding. We didn't take a vote on it to make it official. Because remember, you said you wanted that document to be a part of the, um, pat of any candidate information going forward. But I think Mr. Charn, he can correct me if I'm wrong. I think he said his interpretation was that that document did not preclude a applicant for candidacy prior to being certified by a board of supervisor of election of a town or a city to be able to start their campaigning, posting flyers and posters and thus so on. So just want to make sure, Mr. Charn, I don't want to speak for you, but if you can restate what you had said.
Okay.
Mr. Charnovich? Okay, yes.
Oh, uh, tha- 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 thank you, board member Lundie. I was, I was paying attention to you while I was, uh, listening to Ms. Kamono who had her head popped in the door about, about the other, the other question. So you're asking me to, to clarify the 45-day rule?
Ye- yes, for Ms. Sojourne because she's under the understanding that an applicant for candidacy prior to certification cannot start to post campaign literature. And it was based on your comments, my understanding was that that's not the case, that they can. So I wanted to know if that's the case, do we need to take a vote on that for our town purposes? Or do we, are we, are we satisfied with just going on your interpretation?
My understanding is there's no delineation with the 45-day rule.
Right. So therefore, board member Sojourner, um, the gentleman who's running, and I don't want to mispronounce it, Mr. Catta, he can camp, he can start the campaign if we don't certify him today in this audio meeting, this meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, board member Lundie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charnovich. Thank you so much. My, my pleasure.
Uh, Chair Williams?
Yes, I'm sorry for the delay. My computer seems like it's trying to crash, so bear with me for just a moment, please. Okay, I'm back with you. I was trying to make sure I had the right agenda in front of me. All right, at this point, um.
Uh, yeah, Chair, Chair Williams?
Yes.
So Ms. Kamono was able to get, um, Mr. Diacate on the phone. He is both willing to and able to su- uh, sign the, the exact do- sign the exact financial disclosure form and email it to me and also stop in here first thing tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM or slightly after. So he is certainly willing to, to get this done for us.
Fantastic. That would be good. Thank you so much. At this. Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Um, you know, you, um, may- maybe this was already said while I was speaking, speaking with Ms. Kamono, but, uh, you know, you could, um, I'm not sure if this board is here in, in Leidenberg has done this before, but you could, in a case like this, you know, certify him contingent upon him, uh, be receiving the document by time X tomorrow or by whenever. Um, and then I guess, in, I'm, I'm saying that in the context of to, for something relatively simple like this, to then not have to come together and meet just for that. Does that make sense, Chair Williams?
Yes, it does, uh, make sense. Um, just putting my thinking cap on here for a minute because I don't want to be put in a situation where we certify him and something happens to him and he doesn't get here to sign his form. However, uh, we can go ahead and I, I will go ahead and, and certify him and all other candidates today. Based on the, on what you're telling me, because you say he's going to stop by the office and then he's also going to email that attachment to you.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, then I suggest that we, uh, put forth a motion to certify all candidates. For Ward's one and Ward two.
I have a question. You said Donnie Bridgman didn't fill out the complete application, so how can he be certified without all the information?
Uh, Ms. Ms. Mr. White's, uh, point of order, um, so the, it's a public meeting. It's a, it's a meeting of the board. Uh, there's not a, not precisely exactly public comment per se, so I can, uh, um, myself or Chair Williams can, uh, Chair Williams, Mr. White's posted a que- I just wanted to, sorry after that, Mr. White, I'm just trying to keep a, keep a tight ship. Um, so Mr. Mr. White's posted a question in the chat uh, regarding, um, uh, a question about Mr. Bridgman's application. So the, uh, um, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure the question is completely clear, but, uh, we, we, we are current, we are currently saying, based on the board's review, that we do have the materials needed to certify all candidates, including Mr. Bridgman at this time. Um, is that correct, Chair Williams?
That is correct.
Okay. I hope that answers your question, Mr. White. So I'm not certain who said that or, but, um, we did not say that. I don't, I don't think we did. At least I did not.
Yeah, I, I just heard somebody say they need to contact Donnie to come in and fill out the missing information on the application. That, that was my question.
Did it? No, I don't think so.
No.
No, we, we have all of his paperwork at this time. We have all of his paperwork.
That, that is confirmed.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Uh, board member Lundie, I see you had your hand raised.
Yes, thank you so much, um, um, Clerk Charnovich, um, um, Chair Williams. So I agree that we could move forward with the certification continued upon, contingent upon, um, Mr. Diacata and us giving, um, you know, voting on a time, but we would like to have this information emailed to us and then the board can move forward with the motion and then the vote on that. Otherwise, we would, um, have to wait for him. And if we did have to wait for him, I would like to make sure he understood that he can start the campaign. But moving forward with the motion to go ahead and certify, um, all the applicants with a contin- with a time for him to submit his documentation, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Well, before Mr. White's question, that was the motion I was going trying to, to put forward to, um, the Board of Election Supervisors so that we could do that based on him sending in, Mr. Diacate sending in by email the, the signed form and coming in also to, to sign it at the office. We, I have agreed that we can certify all candidates at this time, today. I'd like to put forth that motion that we sent, that we certify all candidates for Ward one and two.
Um, question, Chair Williams, are we giving Mr. Diacata a time period and we just went?
Yes, mister. Yes, um, we, we will have all of that when we send him the email. That will be in his email. The se- the section that's missing the date and the time in which he has to have it returned to us. All of that will be in his email.
Oh, okay. So we're not reading on that time in this motion? That's what I'm asking.
We can, we can put forth a motion for that time if necessary. That he will have it end by tomorrow, close of business.
Okay, fab. So you're mending that motion? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So I, okay, I second your motion.
All, you all agree by using the sign by? I always have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Uh, the next matter we have is Election Day hours. We discussed that at the, at the previous audio meeting. Election Day, October 2nd, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We also discussed, um, training. And I believe, uh, that is, Mr. Charnovich is working on a date and a time for that. And I have to ask, um, Ms. Saunders, Liz Saunders, um, I don't know how flexible your time is during the day.
It will be.
But in the.
That day, it will be flexible.
Okay. Now, what about training? Because I'm not sure of the exact date at this time. So that we get, we will come to Suetown Hall to be trained on the voting machine, how it works. And at that time, you all have any questions? The representative or the trainer will answer any and all questions. Um, it's not difficult to do. And it doesn't take that long, but ti- it can be time consuming based on the number of questions, uh, that you have that you want to ask and otherwise, it's a very simple and easy process. Um, I don't know how if Ms. Saunders is not able to come to training during the af- early afternoon. I don't know if the trainer will be able to come after 4:00 PM. That's something we're looking into.
Okay, so once you know, you can just let me know.
Yes, we will send you an email to let you know and let everyone else know also, the date and the time, and it will be at Town Hall. Also, the Election Day, uh, shift. Um, I don't know if you were in a still, still on the call at the last audio. Uh, I had explained how the shifts work. Uh, Town Hall opens at 7:00, for voters to come and cast their votes. And usually the Town Hall closes at 7:00 PM. We ask all of the Board of Election Supervisors to co- stay or come back so that we can take care of the process of closing out the counting of the ballots. Now, we don't do hand counting. The machine actually does the counting, but we need to be there to follow the steps, to process all of that so that we can present it to the mayor and the town. So with that, the shifts will normally begin like 6:30, 6:45 and run in like three to four hour inquiry, increments. And if you have a preference as to what time of day you would like to come, we will get, we will post a sheet. We will send everybody, uh, the time slots and you can fill in where the time of day that you would like to be at Town Hall. I hope I explained that right. Um, if you seem confused or if I didn't explain it right, just let me know and I, I will try to simplify it. Any questions?
No, I understand.
Very clear.
Nope. Thank you so much.
Okay. Now, we've already gone over the sign rules. Um, we have the campaign finance forms already. Um, Mr. Charnovich, have you, I see the date here, September 12th. Have you received any of the forms back already?
Uh, for the, no, not as of yet, no, because they are, that is the last day. I think it's a, it's a, it's like 30, 35 days before the, uh, um, well, the short, short answer, Chair Williams, is no, not yet. I know one, I know one of the candidates was here today earlier, working on the form and, uh, is going to be turning it in, but I, I've not received any yet.
Okay, then, um, I'll touch bases with you and you can let me know so that everyone else will know that, and all the forms have been received.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, my, my understanding, that's not a requirement of certification, by the way, for the, for the.
Right.
Because they, they wa- they will also need to fill out, uh, submit the forms, I think, 10 days after the election as well, so.
Yes, okay. Um, we've already discussed the election sign rules. And I need to know, uh, are there any miscellaneous items that you need to talk about or have questions? We can do that at this time.
No, Chair Williams, I would just like to say, um, I'm looking forward to, um, our now candidates running for, uh, the, the vacant seats and just wish everyone well in, in the process.
Thank you. Same here.
Uh, Chair, Chair Williams?
Yes.
If I may, uh, just wanted to go, uh, briefly back up. I know we're just gonna, uh, I won't belabor everything because it's been. uh, I won't belabor everything because it's been a very good meeting so far. Appreciate everybody's time today. Um, so for everybody's knowledge, the board, everybody on the call, our election, our, uh, voting machines are scheduled to be delivered from the company around September 20th. So they'll be here a good week or so before the training. Uh, they'll be delivered to the site. Uh, that's that's what they like to do. The company told me. So, um, that's that. And then the date, uh, I might have been mentioned, might have not been, but September 28th is a is a date that we were looking at for the training. So I guess maybe while we're all on the call, is September 28th completely bad for anybody on, uh, on the Board of Elections for training? Uh, this is also something we can, for the training aspect of this, we can work out together, I think, with state of the email, um, uh, together to get that organized. Uh, but the 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 machine vendor also did say that he is flexible to the needs of the Board of Elections, uh, team. So, um, we have that to go for us, too. So if it needs to be at four o'clock, for example, uh, that if that works for everybody, we can make that our our option. I just wanted to make sure that that September 28th is not bad for someone, and then we can go to a different date. That's all.
Okay, um, to all of the Board of Supervisors, um, September 28th seems to be a tentative date. If it's not a good date for you, I suggest you check your calendar and let us know. Um, if possible, let us know by Friday. You can just send a short email. Doesn't have to be lengthy. You know, uh, if you have a problem with September 28th, and I believe the 28th is on a Thursday. Twenty-eighth is on a Thursday, and if, uh, the best give also the best time of day for you. We need to know that because we want to ma- make sure we get back to, um, the people who are doing the training as soon as possible. We don't want to delay them at 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 all, uh, since they're coming to us. So if anyone has a conflict with the Thursday, September 28th, uh, if Mr. Charnovich can find out whether or not, uh, they can come, say, around 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon, that would be great. If anyone has a problem with that time of day and date, please let us know as soon as possible.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering an estimation of how long the training is, just for my own purposes.
I would say it it's it's less than an hour. But if you have questions, as I mentioned before, it could go a little little longer. But I it's not three and four hours. Definitely not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's anywhere from thirty minutes to an hour, I would say. And it's very simple, very easy. It's not hard. It's not difficult. Uh, you know. Anyone have any other comments or questions?
No, no, no one here.
Not at this time, no.
Okay, uh, Mr. Charnovich, do you have the meet, the Board of Election minutes for the last meeting, which was August 23rd?
No, so I anticipate, I put those on here and anticipated having them on the agenda to complete, but I was not able to get to get them completely done. So that's why I did not circulate them. So,
um, okay.
We can table that, uh, item, please.
Okay, um, that's fine. Uh, when you get it, uh, maybe you can email it to us and also, um, i- in that same e- email, let us know, um, what the gentleman has to say about the time for September 28th. That would be our training date.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I'm I'm making some notes here, and so is, uh, my, our team, Monsi and Ms. Kamono and Mr. Jeffrey, so.
Okay, great.
We all are here. Um, yep, that sounds good.
Okay, um, let's move on to the the scheduling of the next meeting. Do we need to schedule another meeting before the 28th? But that's only a few days before, uh, Election Day. No comments, no questions about the next scheduled meeting date?
Uh,
this is Board Member Sojener. Are the biographies or and are they an an important important component of the, um, the election package? Make sure that everybody has handed in, excuse me, handed in their biography?
Uh, um, yes, Mr. Charnovich, you can answer that question because I don't have access to the bios and the photos.
Uh, tha- thank you, Chair Williams. So, um, as of 5:00 p.m. right now, this moment, uh, I I what we have two, I have received two of the four, uh, bios along with, um, along with, uh, the photo. So we have two more to go, and all 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 applicants are aware that the, uh, that the, um, deadline, we made, the the boards have the deadline of September the 7th.
Which is tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes, uh, at 5:00 p.m. So, um, the currently, as of this moment, we have two of the four.
Okay.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Sojener. Go ahead.
No, I was gonna ask if it is, if it is an important component of the package, maybe we could meet briefly to make sure everyone has handed in their bio. If not, then maybe we don't need to meet again.
Uh, I don't think it's necessary to meet. I think, uh, at this point, they're sending it in via email to Mr. Charnovich. And since it's only four people, four candidates, um, he can just shoot us a quick email to say that all bios and, uh, all photos have been received of the candidates. And and let us know the date it's going to be posted on all the social media platforms that the town of Bladenburg has. I don't think I, I don't think we need an audio call for that. A quick email should do it.
I agree. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Ms. Lundey?
Yes, thank you, Chair Williams. I agree as well, and I just wanted to you to, um, ask that, uh, it, yeah, all of that be posted at the social media platforms, um, Chair Charnovich, as well as I I would think it would be posted at the website. And does the town plan on sending it out in the e-blast, too? Because we want to get as much exposure as possible so that we can encourage the nation to come out to vote.
Yeah, it will be sent to all social media platforms that the town of Bladenburg had, just like it was, um, and I think it was 2021 election. All social media platforms were covered, including the e-blast. Um, and I think it worked out very well. It should also be, should also be posted on, uh, Nextdoor because I think we did that as well. There's a lot of people pay attention to, uh, Nextdoor, Bladenburg.
Yeah, I I have, I share as well on Nextdoor as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think everybody's watching Nextdoor. They kind of use it like Facebook. I don't know why, but, you know, at least they're reading.
Uh, Chair Williams, uh, may I? May I speak? Uh, a a couple of quick things and related to this. Um, and I may, I may ask Mr. Jeffries to chime in. And Mr. Jeffries, feel free to correct me if I misstate anything or add anything on. Uh, Mr. Jeffries is very, he's our social media guru manager. He's extremely good at this. Um, and I certainly definitely have faith in his role that he'll be able to get this, uh, when now that we have our candidate certified, we can get everything uh, together on our, on our, on our, uh, launching plan for the, uh, to notify people about the election. So, um, I will say that if by some chance we don't have all four back by tomorrow, um, uh, uh, by the deadline. So I I was thinking about, we were thinking about this internally, and I think we're gonna, at a minimum, launch out tomorrow, the four candidates that have been certified, at least a list. We would like to have all four. I guess what I don't want to do is say, for example, by the close of business tomorrow, one person did not submit. That would not be not be good, but, uh, to not post all four simultaneously with the photos and the bios. Um, but at a minimum, we will launch out the four names and the wards, so everybody can see that so far. But the plan is to utilize social media. Uh, Mr. Jeffries, if we have access to Nextdoor, we can do that as well. We didn't talk about that internally, I don't think. And then I think maybe also, Mr. Jeffries, our plan is to get this into the town's upcoming newsletter. Can you confirm that, Mr. Jeffries, based on timing? I know we are under a tight time window.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, that's correct.
So we'll we'll also have the avenue. I I'm not even sure, uh, Chair Williams, I'm not sure if the, in 2021, 2021, I don't think our our rejuvenated newsletter was was a thing then. Back then, it was, may maybe I'm wrong, but, um, we're gonna have that. We're gonna have that as well.
We had the newsletter, but I don't recall if the bios and photos were in the newsletter. I can't recall. But I know it it went, uh, uh, out on the social media platforms that the, uh, the town has. I do remember that part.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Sure, got short. Sorry, go ahead, Chair Williams.
I have a question for you. Um, exact, what is the exact date that you plan to put the bios and the photos up on social media media? I know it's not going to be 5:00 p.m. tomorrow, but what what date did you have? I think we discussed it in the last audio meeting, but I don't know know what the exact date was.
So, um, well, the the short answer is ASAP. So let's say that I have all of them, we have all of them received by tomorrow, as long as Mr. Mr. Jeffries can do the formatting and get that formatted to a way that he is good for social media. He's way smarter than me at that, so I don't even know how that all works. But so assuming they're received and all the formatting is done, we're probably gonna launch it out AS, I mean ASAP. So, uh, it it could be, it it could be Friday, I would say. Is that right, Mr. Jeffries? Or is that your thought?
Yes, that's correct. So if I have all the bios by tomorrow, by 5:00 p.m., most likely it'll be posted by Friday. But if I have all the bios before 5:00 p.m. tomorrow, then it'll most likely also be included in the weekly email update as well and on social media. So it all depends on when they're received, but most likely Friday.
All right, that sounds good. Sounds like a good plan. Okay, um, are there, is there any other business that we need to discuss before we adjourn?
Uh, so Chair Williams, uh, Tom Clerk Charnovich, I I just wanted to confirm while we were still on the record in the recording that I have already received the email, the email signature, uh, from, uh, now candidate, Mr. Diacate. It's already been received.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That means all his forms are now complete.
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, um, I think this concludes our business for today. Um, if no one else has any comments, questions, suggestions, now's the time.
Uh, Town Clerk again. They 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 have to give me the hook here to tell me to be quiet. Uh, just kidding. We kind of, we kind of diverted off. I never, I I never, uh, also provided some input to the board on the idea of another meeting. I think that a good approach might be to, um, you know, kind of play by ear to an extent. I noticed in 2021, I think, three or four meetings were held, but there were some different dynamics happening there, I think. But, um, yeah, if we if we need to have one, I can certainly reach out and we can get one organized if that if that makes sense.
Yes, and also, uh, any last minute items that you can think of, uh, that has not been covered in these two audio meetings. Uh, feel free to shoot us an email, and then if it's warranted, then we can still have another audio meeting.
That sounds great.
Agreed, agreed.
And also, I'd like to add, um, that on Training Day, if there's anything that anyone can think of that needs to be done, um, prior to, we don't have a whole lot of days in between that time and the me and the Election Day, but we can have a brief meeting before, uh, we leave the training. Just a thought.
Yeah, that's that. That's that's a great point, Chair Williams. Um, yeah, that's a great point. So we may want to, yeah, e- either on the front end of the training or after the training. Um, I would need to get pub, uh, publish that, that particular meeting as well. So if we do it, we kind of need to, uh, post it, if that makes sense.
Yes, yes. Okay. Well, at this point, I I think it's time, uh, for the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, so move. Board Member Lundey, so move.
Here a second.
Board Member Sojener, second.
Second, and all ayes have it?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and so order. Thank you, buddy.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Charnovich. All right.
Thank you, everyone. Stay cool.
You, too.
Thank you, Mr. Charnovich. Thank you for your help.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Board Members.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.